Good evening, everybody. President Pressa, Superintendent Pizano, Governor of the School Board, and esteemed guests, it is my honor to welcome you to your table on behalf of Honor Elementary. I appreciate the opportunity to share all of the amazing things that are happening on our campus and to highlight some of our outstanding students who made our school a special place to learn and grow. This evening, we have the privilege of being able to share with you all and begin the meeting with a flagfully announced in our prayer and led by some of our exceptional students, our school patrols led by their leader, Mr. Coach Christopher Hudson. And at this time, I am going to invite some of you in the class to the board and lead us in the process.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we will have Gabriel and Leah to lead us into the meeting.
Heavenly Father, we come to today asking for your guidance. Please allow me to begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to explore our culture as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would show us how to unlock our work of strength, joy, and goodness. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. This dedication of our students are really proud to be here. They play a vital role in our campus' safety and responsibility. Demonstrating leadership amongst other campus values as well. I'm really proud to be here and tell you about some of the things that they do on campus and the things that they're really excited about within this court staff and here at Honor Elementary.
Good evening, members of the school board. We're the safety patrol team from Honor Elementary, and we are excited to share all of the help to make our school safer and better. As I think we saw this group of school leaders sharing with our school staff, we assist students around the level of dismissal, remind the school of setting good record for other students.
Every day, we have important jobs to do, including helping students cross safety in the hallways and near side of crosswalks, assisting younger students in getting to class or their class. Making sure everyone follows the safety rules in the hallways and at the school. Reminding schools to be careful of what's on the school.
I'm certainly addicted to these kinds of stuff. I'm excited to find the future through this activity. We encourage parents to be on the same page as they are in the world. And help teachers and staff and everybody in the community have a larger and business.
Being a safety patrol teaches us leadership, teamwork, and responsibility. It helps us prepare for middle school and beyond while making our school a better and stronger place. Thank you for supporting our safety patrol for our high school. We are proud to serve our school and help keep our friends safe every day.
My name is Gabriel. I will tell you why I would be patrol. Being a patrol makes me feel excited because I can make kids smile and because patrol is my... My name is Leah. And I think what I enjoy about being a patrol is that I get to kind of do the special speeches like I can do.
Thank you so much, our honorable safety patrol students, for their dedication to keeping our school safe and for sharing their experiences with us tonight. Their leadership and commitment to their peers are a testament to the values described in this bill at Honor Elementary and making it a better place every day. We are so proud of them. If any of your friends or supporters of these wonderful students could stand up and offer a wave of applause? All right, and at this time, I will try to score over to continue with my presentation. Thank you once again for your dedication for keeping our school better. The next time, I'll give you a word of honor.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from both of you. You're very excited because coming here always to recognize our district teachers of the year who are all, who are also offering here with us tonight and considering our community and friends.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. As we know, teachers are the bedrock of our democracy. They teach our future, of our community, our city, our state, and our nation. Teaching is the one profession that creates all other professions. Tonight, we would like to recognize East Central's finest teachers, the best of the best. Teachers that go above and beyond the call of duty, always putting kids first. These teachers are deeply committed to the quality of teaching, and we are eternally grateful for their dedication and for the positive impact they have on the lives of our students. So first up, from East Central High School, Sherry Ayers. So we know teachers can't do this alone. We have a strong support system at home and at work. Do we have any family and friends from Mrs. Ayers or the audience? If so, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? So next up, from Cass Lee High School, Eric Brown Fernandez. Do we have any of his friends in the audience or family that we can recognize? Thank you, guys. So next up, from Heritage Middle School, Courtney Davis. Do we have any of his family or friends in the audience that we could recognize? Right there. So next up, from Tradition Elementary School, Criselda Gomez. Do we have any of Mrs. Gomez's family or friends in the audience that can stand so we can recognize you? From Honor Elementary, Christina Gonzalez. Any of Mrs. Gonzalez's family or friends in the audience? From Sinclair Elementary School, Orton Haddad. With the family and friends of Mrs. Haddad, please stand so we can recognize you as well. From Bear County Learning Center, Mrs. Frances Coatservis. Any family or friends from Mrs. Coatservis in the audience? From the Con Valley STEM Academy, Melissa Crewall Flores. And I think she's got some family or friends right in the front. Please stand so we can recognize you. And from Solado Elementary School, we have Anna Silva. It looks like she has some family or friends already standing. So next up, we are going to recognize our elementary teacher of the year for the district and our nominee for the region 20 teacher of the year. From Harmony Elementary School, Samantha Tupper. With the family or friends of Samantha, Mrs. Tupper, please stand. And our secondary teacher of the year and our district nominee for the HEB Excellence in Education Award from Legacy Middle School, Carolyn Owens. With the family and friends of Mrs. Owens, also please stand so we can recognize you. Last but certainly not least, our East Central ISB Teacher of the Year and district nominee for the Trinity Prize in Teaching Excellence from Highland Forest Elementary School, Lindsay Paula. Congratulations, Lindsay. Lindsay Paula, congratulations. So can we just give one more round of applause to all the ECIS's finest teachers? We would certainly look forward to your dedication for the positive impact that you have every day on the lives of our students. One last time, congratulations.
This is an annual report that is required by statute to be presented publicly before by the Texas Education Agency if you're ever to be here. We did this report, the power of reports in your electronic patent. It does indicate performance of students across Texas as well as district profile information. So prior to public hearing, if it's okay, select open my brief overview of some of the information that we've seen on the table. There was perfect review that President Keyes publicly issued.
President Christopher Stone, who is the board, I give the opportunity to briefly present this report. As Mr. Chris Stone said, this is a required overview for the board. But I'd like you to see throughout it that it's not the most timely document. And he said that we strive to give you kind of current information, which is here is a little bit older information. Most of what you'll see today, you've actually seen before. And so I'm going to try to pull up some of that for you. Okay, so we love our acronyms in Texas, right? And so it's a Texas academic performance report, as we said. And to cover the 2324 report, which they released recently, primarily 2324 data, while some of that data has really been 2223 data. It's old and even dips into 2122 a little bit, but so it's not the most current. As a reminder, the last two years, our state rating has been not released until this year. So we have a pending lawsuit, and they haven't rated it in this for the last two years. And so our ratings are included in there, and we're not rating it just like the rest of the state. I pulled the attendance from the report. I'm going to leave that and I'll show you our, where we are in my later presentation. But for this one, what I want you to see was that the state is around a 93.3% and we have been running a 23.3%. And so we talked previously around how one of the main contributing factors is that chronic absenteeism. That with COVID yet, it's all a spike there. So it's not that all the kids are missing more as much as smaller numbers are missing from school. And so that's a number that you've seen that data previously. When the state talks about college, career, military, then it's CCMR. They need college career or military debt. And in the 2223 school year, a lot of states, counties were at 37%. I'm not sure I remember that number later when we talk about where we are today. And then college rate is probably 12. We do look at graduation rate, see that we're pretty comparable. Both a four-year rate for the last two years or as a five-year rate. And so I want you to think about it, we're talking about five-year rate, we're talking about the kids who graduated in 2021. And so in the five years before that, I think they were missing. So you can see where this is a little divided. The last piece I wanted to show you was a measure, a progress measure. So I do this review on the report this year, so I want you to understand what I mean. For the measure of percentage of people making progress on stall, who's in their, their category. And so I'm just highlighting some of the progress there. What I want you to see is that my sixth grade is one of the lowest state lines. So far, I count for the state, and that's a low one. And that's one of those we struggle on. We've been talking about my sixth grade is something that we're going to close to. I want to jump down to two, to the progress we do. So 72% of our students spend that amount, which is a lovely region in the state. But English one is where we have a big spell where you can see there's a gap of 72. The last thing I wanted to mention was like fifth grade. We found out that fifth grade reading typically is a higher point. That is one of the highest points in states, about 70 around here, but it's also one of our highest points. And we're closer to that state mark there with the third grade than some other grades. That was the math. So the same thing, it's a percentage of students needing the expected growth. So highlighted a couple of them there. I want to call attention to fourth grade and sixth grade are two of them we've been talking about in our data. So I want you to see the data there. So 44% of our students, maybe the 60% in the state, are meeting that growth target. And then in middle school, we're talking a lot about middle school math. And that sixth grade one is one we call attention to. And then put a little star on eighth grade. That's our seventh graders taking the eighth grade tests. So on the report, it says eighth grade, but if you remember, our sixth graders do sixth and some seventh grade math. They take the sixth grade test. The seventh grader do seventh grade math, and eighth grade math, they take the eighth grade test. And so 37% of our students did it there. And then eighth grade students take the algebra test. And then some of our students, especially kids who weren't in our system, that take the ninth grade, they take that algebra test. And what I wanted you to see there was that we meet the growth target, 74% of the time in algebra, which is again a lovely region in this state. Just going to check my notes here. The last thing I wanted to point out was that the reading growth was about 50%. And the math was 52%, and that's pretty normal for us. That reading growth seems to be a little higher, both growth in achievement than our math growth in achievement as a whole. And I'll just close by saying that my next presentation in a little bit will be our normal one. We've got the data, and we'll have, actually, some of the data was updated today. So I'll have some very fragile before you and some, some of your stuff.
Thank you. And so given that this was a public hearing, would anyone like to speak to the subject at this time? With that, we'll move on to the next one, which is 7.1, update regarding ECIS District's Community Report, trustee results.
Hi, evening. So I had some new pictures, but we, a couple of weeks ago, we went to governance camp in Galveston. And always my favorite, it will always be because it's expected to take a student live. And it really makes my heart happy to hear from the students about they like what they're doing. They're very engaged, and I would like our district to maybe go and represent us. I have some ideas, so I'll be pushing that for the next year. I also, I don't know if y'all are keeping track, but the final four that Mr. Bobby's worked started for our trustees to do the reading to third graders. Our third graders are doing it across the district. The Con Valley is still in it. But I have their place. 1,590 minutes ran to our third grade, our third graders. And I tried to make it to campus, but we're already right on the road from daycare, so I didn't want to make a lot of mistakes. I'm sorry. I know, so I see a lot of our daycare kids. But it's a lot of fun, and they love it. I try to get like all into it and make it fun for them, because they're probably tired of some of these. But I don't know if I'm going to, I think Mr. One is at 2,000 something minutes. So I don't know if I'm going to make it, but I'm going to try. So I'm still in the final four.
And I do not have anything.
I'll report that to my grandson. I'm so proud of him. Student of mine, and he's doing such a great job. Also, I'd like to, before we show the pictures, I'd like to kind of recognize the departments in the district that does the central, that's essential to every day, daily activities and make the district run smoothly. I'm talking about transportation department. I'm talking about the maintenance department, and I'm talking about the nutrition department. I want to thank the transportation department to make sure that our kids get to school safely and make sure they get home safely. They also provide transportation for kids that are in the true recovery around the school. And I want to thank them for the board trustees. I want to move on and thank the maintenance department for all they do. Sometimes they don't get the recognition they deserve, but I want to thank them. As I visit the campuses around the district and I, the appearances of the outside of the school, it's free from debris, whether it's lawn, the lawn is manicured and perfection. When you go inside the buildings, the buildings, the floor is polished, trash cans empty, and the rest of it's clean. I want to thank the maintenance department, the staff, for everything that they do. Moving on to the nutrition department, I want to thank them also. They provide breakfast for our students. They provide lunch. They provide evening snacks. And as data tells, that a good breakfast and a good active, uh, active performance. I want to move on to the front office staff. That's Suzie at Sinclair, the front office staff. They're the ones that greet our parents. They want to greet our visitors. They're warm and welcome, reflects on the administration and the teachers that you are welcome here. That Suzie at Sinclair, I don't recall her name, but on that Tuesday, I went around to give the front office staff and thank them for all they do. I gave them Mardi Gras beads. Suzie is very nice. I've talked to her every time I go to Sinclair. She gets my bar, she comes out and speaks. I talk with her, her husband, but to take the same time, bite the string. So I just wanted to bring that up. I went on and left there, and I went over to... All right, oh, I want to talk about Liz. This is Liz. She's an officer at Sinclair. And she does an excellent job with the floor traffic. I mean, her job is dangerous because parents are trying to drop them off pretty quick. And I told you all this, because she does an excellent job. The kiddos are being dropped off, and the traffic is moving swiftly, and she does an excellent job. I want to recognize that also. We got a traffic, we do an excellent job. As I made my rounds on... That Tuesday, I went over to Sinclair. That's Sinclair. That's, uh, the front office staff there took the Mardi Gras beads also, and just thanked them for all they do. Over there, I thank Highland Forest, and I went by there. I don't know who that guy is, the master. I wanted to thank them also. I went by the Con Valley, and I wanted to, just thank the front office staff that took the Mardi Gras beads. Because her, she came out, and she offered me some king cakes, all the way from New Orleans, Louisiana. Rich boys. And I want to thank her for the king cake. I think she has somebody on the staff from New Orleans. And as I, after those events, I went to, what's up, Walter? I also went to playoff games. I went to the Special Olympics. When I went to the Special Olympics, it was amazing to see kids with limited abilities participate. I want you to focus on participation. Winning wasn't important to them. Losing didn't even matter. They were participating, who we can't even get. They were participating, who we can't even get, middle school kids in the P class to walk the track. So it was amazing to see, as I made my rounds through the Special Olympics, it was well attended. I talked to different special ed teachers, different volunteers from around the city. After they realized that I was a trustee, they said, I want you to play football class volunteer. The kids were so excited to see them in their football jerseys. They were very respectful. That type of feedback tells me how athletes are not only about winning, but they're about caring. It's a reflection on their parents, reflection on their teachers and coaches, it's a reflection on the district, and each central character. Couple of days ago, I went to St. Clair for a bar presentation. Our superintendent, he talked about the growth, he talked about the urgent need for new schools. I hope it resonates with the voters, because one day, several will want to leave school districts in bad county. Because I believe in hope, and I defy hope, except for only my expectations, I know my challenge.
So we, uh, it's been, we were out a couple of, uh, four meetings. I had some training and some other things with TASB and L TASB. Um, but we, uh, got an opportunity to go to the playoff games. And I saw her go in, uh, for their parts. I mean, they had a great season, and that's all. And, uh, big fact, one coach, uh, when he says we have some of the finest athletes. They they play with all their hearts when their character stands out. And, uh, even though we, uh, came up short, their their character was, uh, was a sight to see. Uh, held their heads up, um, and, uh, their workmanship was extraordinary and awesome to see. And that's what their pride of wearing that, you see, like a golden, uh, just had the peacock feathers out, because, uh, the scoreboard didn't show victory, but their character did. So awesome, uh, opportunity we had there to see that. Also, the softball group started their season seeing them play, uh, and, uh, now, now, I had, uh, opportunity with CPS, uh, got to go to the south side of San Antonio, Arundel District, and, uh, read to the first, and kindergarten first grade, but representing East Central as well. Uh, talking, talking about all the great things that are happening. Uh, here is, uh, Mr. Hawthorne. We, uh, went out and, uh, with his junior, had a tour of this, uh, great, uh, program that we had here in East Central. Uh, I love to share the great things that are happening, because sometimes it's unseen, because it's, uh, maybe not in the bright light. But they have such a great, uh, engineering programs, things that he was sharing with us, uh, race cars that they have, and all the things that go into that, kids, uh, just for everything they add into that as well. Might not be on athletic side, but it's on the, uh, engineering side, the things that that they enjoy. That's what I, one thing about East Central, which is we offer so many different programs to so many different children of different, uh, likes. And it's, uh, interesting to know. A young man there at the building shop, uh, I got to meet him, he played softball with, uh, my son, and, uh, he's a great bowler, by the way, too. And showed us his, uh, his bead there, and, uh, passed his building certification, and, uh, does an amazing job. He asked me, can you out well? I said, well, I could put some quote, um, on there. I, Mr. Uh, Mr. Crowe, way back in the day, taught me how to weld. And, uh, and it looked like some of the same booths, I would think it's the same booth, but, uh, uh, I got, I had an opportunity to grow up and learn that as well. So the metal fab shop, the things that are going on in there, uh, it is just a great thing to see. So many things that we have, you know, the kids have opportunities to grow here. Uh, and that's something that I like to showcase, because I believe in our our students, and we believe in what's happening here in East Central. We have some great things, and a great future ahead for all of them. I like to say I'm proud of East Central, uh, way back. Went to, uh, Galveston, uh, Taddy, uh, I confer with, uh, Mr. Reese, uh, there. It's one of my favorite, if not the favorite, and I forget to hear from the students. And, uh, we have some students, uh, in the state of Texas that are going to leave us one day, and, uh, in the future, probably. So one of them, I'll share a story, this young lady, uh, her parents are from Vietnam, they came here to the United States. And she had an opportunity to grow up in the United States, and she talked about how awesome the opportunity she had, and why, um, the school gave her that opportunity. Where she came from, or her parents came from, they didn't have that opportunity. Only the more the, you know, the more wealthy people had that kind of opportunity. And, uh, she's going to be a rocket scientist, and I was working a lot with young lady, and the way she spoke, it was just, uh, just eloquent speech. And, um, she went back and started a foundation where she went back to her parents' home country and built bridges, little bridges, and built two, built two bridges, two bridges that people used to have to wait across the water to get to school or to get to the communities, uh, to to for their commerce and stuff like that. She was part of building two, built bridges. Just amazing young lady, and so, uh, wealth of knowledge. That's her on the, on the left side there, uh, the red dress, uh, and the young man there on the right is going to be a lawyer. Young lady holding the microphone was going to be a teacher, and, uh, you, lady in yellow was the presenter, and then the young lady in there, which, uh, she's a, uh, but she, uh, all of them just, opportunity to hear from young people is amazing. Because we sometimes don't give them the credit that they deserve, uh, because we think, well, they're just young. And I'm gonna tell you, I I'm excited about what Texas has. And then, of course, we got, that's really what I'm, and, uh, so we we get a chance to network with other, uh, TASB attendees. The other thing, too, is, is with L TASB, I don't have a picture of this, but, uh, we got a chance to go to the, uh, state capitol, and, uh, we got to advocate. And I'm gonna tell you, if you've never done that, this was the first time I've had an opportunity to go during a legislative session and advocate for our kids, and talk to these legislators, uh, those that are there, maybe they don't understand public schools, or maybe they have a misconception, uh, and I was able to educate a few. And some would listen, and some would ignore, and that was okay, they had that, that, uh, that right to ignore. But but I was able to to advocate for our kids, because I tell you, that's something that our kids need, is advocates, for people to speak for them. Uh, and, uh, if you haven't had an opportunity, I would share, uh, share your voice. Tell them, you represented me, and this is what, and and I just educated, I wasn't up here being here. I did hear some others, uh, that wasn't who I'm, who I am, but I'm gonna make sure that our kids have a voice. I think that's all I got, thank you.
Um, two things. Um, I mean, I'm not even able to say that, I was looking, uh, this week, my husband and I went to, uh, a restaurant. I was ordering from mine, uh, and he had on the East Central hat. And so, as the waitress was taking our, our order, we were in line, uh, she s- she saw the hat, and so she's saying, is that East Central intended? And of course, you know, uh, yes. And then, and she starts naming, she named a student that actually I knew, I knew that had been in sports, Terrell. You might love a college, uh, who needs that kid out here. But, uh, and he was just someone I had, oldest son. But it was, it was an amazing experience for someone to recognize, we're on the way on the northern side of town, and there were people behind me waving, but they enjoyed listening to what they were saying. And so when we were saying that about advocacy, it's the, there's another thing that 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 comes out of us when we're so proud of our school, when we see, uh, these amazing teachers and the awards and all of these things. And we can stand in line and people don't grow tomatoes at you without you opening up the line. Uh, but that what they're wanting to hear, and know that this is a public school, uh, here in Tannen Town. It was just, it was, it was really hard on me. And we had people that hang over it, and, you know, just kind of like this knowledge there. And so, that that was an amazing experience, so thank you for reminding me of that. Now, the other thing I have, I have a certificate of achievement. Uh, this is the certified that Del Brazil has successfully completed tackling chronic absenteeism. It's more than just through the engagement or sixty minutes of learning credit, so, uh, I'm not pretty. But but here's, here's it there. And as we were listening to the reports of from the public, and we looked at, I tuned in specifically to see what our our numbers were, uh, in compared to the state, because this, um, was one of the most, I thought it was gonna be sort of boring. It was amazing, it was amazing. And what they did was, and you could interact, it was a webinar, um, the talk about the the chronic absenteeism. As we tend to think that, uh, a different perception of what that's what that is. And and the the national standards, because they were looking at other schools and stuff. But they gave all of these wonderful resources, and asked what schools were doing, of course, some of the things we were doing, and some of the rewardings and all of that. But it, but it's interesting to see that this really is a nationwide thing, and that they gave even, um, examples of how the budget is impacted, um, uh, with just how many students that were not in school, it can affect how many teachers' salaries you affect. It's those kinds of things that really made it, you know, made you really think. Um, I I would love for us to be, get some more information about this. I mean, I had, I I did dabble in the information as well, from Tannen Town. That all of the strategies and things to bring to help with that, because we're not the only school, or the only state, or whatever, that has, that deals with it. They have a formula for what chronic absenteeism is, and and taking into, um, tardiness and all those kinds of things. So I won't, I won't, of course, but it was just, it was high open. And, uh, so as we listen to our reports and things, we we find that, because we can kind of tell a lot, but we can do. Um, the governor of one of the states got involved, so was so, it was a small town, but that involved so much stuff. That they did things like in a town hall meeting and and made a difference, and looking at the barriers that kept kids from school and that kind of thing. So it was just, I was, I was really excited about that, and I don't want to stop right now. Thank you, but don't do me. I'm sorry? Yeah, Tony direct, Tony direct, that was a good one.
I I felt to, uh, I'm sorry. Okay, perfect. And I I felt to, uh, say something, too, as well. Um, so our superintendent had an opportunity to go and advocate as well, and I heard some great, great things about, yeah, they were bragging on our superintendent, that's another, uh, proud moment. And he was, uh, he was there advocating for our our kids, and, uh, I don't know if you'd like to share any data with us, but. But I I just, I appreciate what he does as well, uh, and going and and taking the stand for it, too, it means a lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much, everybody, for your reports. Next item is eight point one, board goals update. Mr. Sisano?
Yeah, trustees, you can have this, uh, report in two ways, as as you would expect. One is in your miscellaneous packet, or copy, uh, the other, your electronic packet, and you can follow along your way. So I can turn it over to the caller. To continue our trend, but kind of look at some more recent data and kind of align to our goals. Um, and hopefully do a, do justice to John, and I mean, there's a lot of attendants this year for. Um, Miss Casper won't be here, so I'll hopefully do justice to her section, and Dr. Holden's out of state. So hopefully, uh, do justice for her CC1 section. Um, so looking at our attendance, you can see where we're at there, where we're at ninety-two, or five percent. Our goal for the year was ninety-four percent. And so, um, we're, we're a little above that. But you can see from that paper report earlier, um, the twenty-one, twenty-two attendance rate in Central is eighty-nine point five. And, uh, and twenty-two point three, we're at ninety-one point three percent. So you can see that we are trending up. We've got a real nice boost this year on our attendance, um, over the district. And so here's that, on the old chart, showing you the changes by month, by campus. And what I want you to see in the fall, I mean, it's, I think all about two other campuses are up, and the the most good campuses down is attendance over percent. So we have a couple of campuses that have been down about a ten little percent lower than the same time last year. Um, we have noticed a big, a big spike, John was talking about, the flu and a lot of illness that can go on in the last month and a half. That's really gonna lower those, those attendance numbers. Um, but you can see a number of, kind of, things really strong. Um, one of them, I'm gonna highlight for a second there, was, uh, looking at Ocrans. You can see they're up one and a half percent. I think that's the second highest on the board, I think Cass is up two and a half percent. For a few percent, really a big change. Um, so I want to just talk a little bit about what Ocrans is doing over there. And so, uh, it's like, how are you making such a big difference? And so, um, we built an Maggie LaZolla baby over there, she's, she's an A nine, I want you to start getting familiar with. She's, she's, uh, one of our really strong leaders, who's really out there coming. And, um, she, she every day goes through the attendance and looks to see who was out that day. And she calls families like every single day. So she's every day swarking the phones, and then she got a, a series of, and things like they do, ice cream parties, and dance parties, usually for the highest performing grade levels. And I think we talked previously about a program called Talking Points. So Talking Points, they kind of interface with the families a little bit more, uh, just to read, grab, just from their Talking Points, where they were trying to talk about some things about our families, how it's important, and how the grade levels are doing that week. And, um, trying to kind of see some of the, uh, fit into a little bit of, um, some of the great things going on in campuses. And I think it's all this great work, um, and she's the leading mother of the campus that's helping to make that more interesting. People do discipline, our goal for discipline was to reduce the number of incidents by thirty percent, so we would have seventy percent or less of the number of incidents. And right now, we're still heading right at that mark of seventy percent of the incidents from last school year. So we're exactly right on the mark with the goal. Every campus you can see in March has improved year over year. Um, we did have a little spike early on that we expected, especially the secondary around some of those policy changes, but you can see where it's kind of come back down. Um, and then you can see, uh, some really, some hugely impressive numbers. And I think every month or two, I'll remind you guys of, like, Salado, can you use Salado as an example? I think I used that example in January, where they went from twenty-nine to seventy-two. That's because, um, when we went from twenty-nine to seventy-two there, um, they had six incidents that month, which for them, it was, uh, it was a huge number. But, um, Salado has so few incidents on campus that, um, a small number can make a huge percent. And so, um, you can see there were, we probably saw a couple of months, was a lot, kind of peaked up a little bit. Um, um, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, they're still, I think, the second lowest number of referrals in the whole district. Um, and so, um, you know, sometimes if you're not careful, percents can kind of get a little deceiving of numbers. And so, it's because it's, they were so low last year, they're still low this year, and a small number created a pretty good gap. Looking at our academics, um, some bright spots for us, um, Cassie Clark of Legacy versus for Spedwell, town over at Honor, and, uh, first grade honor, um, is that, is that, is that the Cooper thing?
Bobcats.
Then, uh, then fifth grade, I wanted to see earlier, we were talking about how fifth grade tended to be our stronger point for us. And so it's consistent with our behavior at Legacy, so Salado, Creston Forest, Tradition, are all having really strong fifth grade performance. Um, but sixth grade, Liberty, if you remember on the paper report, was one of our lower spots. But Heritage, I think credit to, let's chase, and he's hooking a team over there. Um, that heritage sixth grade team is, is really having a strong year this year. Um, and then over, um, we've been talking about that extended constructive response, that writing piece, and how important it was. And we've been watching really carefully over at Legacy, because we see the trend up, especially for that learning strategy. Remember, we talked about how we have those kids we targeted, we have a hundred eighty, two hundred kids at Legacy, and I pep up in reading, pep up in math. And those kids are, um, each week, I just had a report today, I had every kid with their weekly writing for their exact score. And those kids are, um, each week I just had a report today, I had every kid with their weekly writing for their exact score. And you can kind of see the progress that they're making. So, um, we are, we are pleased to see a trend up. Um, on the legacy, uh, writing, it's important to make a difference for us. Um, that's some bright spots. We talked about fifth grade math, like our strongest point in math. Um, you can see Hound Forest, Oak Crest, Salado, and Tradition all, um, having strong fifth grade. Fourth grade was a bit of a, a weaker area of District Florida to accept Hound Forest, Salado. And I'm just gonna say Hound Forest, kind of, this is about every grade of Hound Forest is really, um, way up there. And then really having a great year. I wanted to just zoom in, kind of, with the paper report, kind of, through that trajectory. Um, so the seventh grade, I put a little asterisk. So, on the paper report, they call it eighth grade star. It's our seventh grader, eighth grade testo. Um, that's usually our lowest point in math. You can see there are a bit of, um, still a hot spot for us. Um, we think we can see last which numbers still, um, you can see in some areas it's higher, in some it's lower. Um, the sixth grade, um, was, was also a learning that we looked at on that growth report of the eighth grade, that was lower. Um, and the fourth grade, we're not where we'd like to be yet, but I want you to see if those numbers are really close. Sometimes already a little higher. I think these masters are already higher than last year. And so, we're optimistic that, um, well, we're not where we want to be in fourth grade, that we will, um, see some, some more progress, um, in fourth grade. Switching over to Legacy, um, that eighth grade number right now, our numbers were down to this. That's usually a really strong area. Um, I think that that's a little bit of a hard fact of the assessment. Um, we think that that number can bounce up and be stronger than what we see on there, but right now, it isn't a lot of number. Um, fourth grade, that is, we have it seven and a half. And then third grade, I want, I want you to think of it a little bit like the fourth grade at the one before. The numbers are really close, but look, they're a little higher, uh, needs and, uh, more than a higher on masters. So, that third grade intercept, I think we're gonna see, um, we're already seeing a little, a little higher. We're expecting a little better than close, um, last year. Um, so we can see again, my support this year. So, some of things going on. Um, professional learnings, and professional learning, we do, they call it job line meetings where we bring together people with the same job at our place. So, they're, which is, in those meetings, we can use the data to get rid of part of it, and what we're working on. And you know, this Casper, the team are a lot of power tools, like what are the main, the main really impactful things in order to address those key areas? Um, so she talked about, um, you know, working on those constructive responses, um, to graphic organizers, with the writing, testing strategies, um, how you respect in the classroom, and how, um, those areas are really going to empower us to where we want to get to. And then everybody's tweaking those plans along the way. So, everybody has, um, competing plans to kind of measure their progress. And, um, the last couple of months, we shared, like, Legacy and, and others, and how they've been doing. And so, we wanted to share a couple of other schools with you and just kind of take a glimpse of their findings. But every campus has a specific target, a plan, of, of, what the target, how we can achieve our goals this year. So, we spoke with Salado. So, this tree I'm gonna do is great job. And all the scripts will be presenting, um, for about thirty minutes. And, um, just giving some highlights of what she was talking about. She talked about vertical teams and how they looked at what, um, every grade level, how they could rest. So, let's start learning about each grade level. So, we're looking to see how we're gonna get to, um, instead of thinking about first grade installation, think about pure for second, third, all the way up to the fourth grade. And, um, what that's gonna look like. And then they looked at, um, their responses to how they're gonna cover any gaps between where the kids at, but helping people learn from grade levels. And then, um, it's trying to do a great job of their assessing what their learning norms and then aggressively monitor before that. So, I'll obviously see exactly where the kids are at, exactly what the gap is, exactly what we're gonna do to help them get there. And, um, that math growth over Salado is very strong in fourth and fifth grade. So, we have high hopes, um, and capabilities to, uh, the other one, I could, um, do our friends over at Hound Forest. Um, it's, it's, uh, I don't know how to describe how rude are you. Britten, if you, if you take a chance to get over there and ask her. Um, the closest I can get is it feels like a Dr. Seuss problem because of all the moves and all the moves that she has. So, she's like, well, why do I know who are who are? And then the who gives into the new who because there's a second group and then there's a new new who. And then there's game backers, game backers plus Nora, hold steady, uh, the super target group. Um, there, there are all these groups and each group is a specific, like, they have by kid. Like, here are the exact names of these kids and this is what we're targeting, why we're targeting, what the implication would be. And it's just, um, it's so deliberate, so mapped out. And, um, that level specificity, I think, was part of why we see Hound Forest declining and declining. It was not that long ago, um, Brittany came over there, they were, um, in the campus that the state asked them to plan. And, um, now, now they're, um, they're one of our highest performing campuses, they really have growth. Um, I, I, I can't do justice in just a few minutes. All the great kids are room over there. But, um, I appreciate the opportunity to please, um, try to give you a glimpse of some of that after you get over there. I hope, I hope you ask her about those Dr. Seuss things. Right, so, um, CCMR. So, looking at our CCMR, um, uh, we actually updated this one because today, our CCMR ready pre-central high school just kicked out to seventy-eight percent of kids are now college careerable in the area. Um, and so, that's, that's a huge, that's a huge number. Um, we had, uh, seventeen to eighty percent of careerable yet there, um, sixty-eight percent are college ready. Um, Cast, uh, uh, is, is a similar belt area of a hundred percent CCMR ready, a hundred percent college ready, and a twenty-five percent career ready. So, those are, those are real big numbers. I want to play a contest though, so if you go back to the paper report from before. Um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, we were at forty-two percent CCMR ready, forty-two percent. Today, we're looking at seventy-eight percent. Um, in twenty-two, twenty-three, at the end of the year, we finished at thirty-seven percent CCMR ready, twenty-nine percent college ready. Um, last year, at this time, we were under thirty percent, under thirty percent. And so, we, we, um, I think we talked to the board about it, I think about twelve months ago. And, uh, March of April, we started, um, making some different plans and we ended in there at eighty-one percent, seventy-one percent. And so, we're now at seven percent. So, next month, my hope is to come in and tell you, we already passed last year's mark, that our goal is eighty-eight percent for the year, so eighty-eight percent. Um, for context, that seventy-eight is a state capability to be ready, so be ready. So, we're, we're climbing up through the numbers and, um, Mary Alice, um, talking with my team over there, um, and doing twenty-four. You can see what the dividend is. I remember in January, I said, hey, I know we haven't seen the big name, uh, but we're gonna start seeing them with kickoff, and we have thirty percent and a fifty percent. And then, uh, career numbers of IDCs, of certifications, are starting to come in, are starting to cease with the pay. Um, so that'll, that'll kind of keep me through, through this firm. So, we'll, we'll keep updated on the successes they're having there. Some last thoughts for you, uh, you guys, um, uh, we did, uh, at East of the School Day, so Mary Alice and team over there. For twenty-fourth year, we see more opportunities. We have all the, now the kids that have tested. Because we know our kids, um, are capable of great things. And sometimes, um, if we leave it up to chance, they are always going to choose to take a test or choose to, to show everything off that they know. So, um, we've been, we've been at the last one, we had eight hundred and seven kids, um, test. Um, and then as she does in these test days, uh, they've already, um, targeted. They said, hey, uh, what if they use a warrant test? If, what if we pull them? So, they have, they're called pull-out days. So, kids, while they're doing bigger things like testing, some of the other kids that they've kind of gathered up and, uh, helping them ditch off their college revenues using TCD and some of the other tools. Um, at the last count, we were one hundred and sixteen students short of our goal of your college revenues after, after year end. Um, and so, um, they're, they're, they're back to the map and they're, they're trying to get all those kids ready. Um, um, for, uh, prior grade levels and the, for those, try to get those juniors and those younger ones also on track. So, um, we can reach those, our long-term target goals that we've got. They're, they're showing a trend now in the area. And then I'll remind you about least there to, um, to more of the DA if you want to have a do it somewhere. So, thanks for your time. Share some of our data with me.
Um, I have a quick moment for the career readiness. You said that the, their certifications have a lot to do with it, can we work there?
So, so, uh,
But they guarantee they have all the certifications done by May, so that will be counted in?
It's, um, like, um, that's a great question. I wish Dr. Holden was here to do the exact thing. I know that they are very careful about when they give those tests so that we get them in the job department for. Um, um, and I believe that if you take it, uh, after the last phase, I think there's a little bit of a window there. I don't, I want you to open it, but, uh, I believe, I know that they're, they're very careful about how they map that out. So, we get it in, but, um, some of these things are not set by us, like their, their windows. Um, so, yeah, it's not a sense where, you know, the policy will allow, you know, like, I know some of them have some say, and some of them are open for the problem. Um, usually they wait till a little later in the year because they want to give them all the time to learn and be ready for it, if they just say. There's still those assessments of kids who are eighteen years old. But just to add a little bit of clarity, we talked about this mid-year review. Uh, but these indicators, CCMR ready means that they need to, to have met at least one or more of the CCMR indicators, which they're about to. Uh, but to be college ready, you look at college career, and I'm glad we've put a big difference. To be college ready, they, they have to have made college readiness indicators and to meet that criteria, they also have to enroll, uh, in college or be enrolled after graduation. Uh, but to be career ready, they have to have been enrolled in college and they have to have an industry certification code. So, that's about that number across the straights, the state is typically a lot lower. And so, those numbers generally don't inflate until post-graduation, uh, to be final. But where they are, again, trending, uh, we're very pleased with. We're on track.
That seems to be a nice asset, as I say.
Yeah. Well, very pleased with that. The only other thing I'll add is just a follow-up to our conversations around accelerating campus excellence at Legacy. Uh, we had a really great faculty meeting right before spring break. Uh, got, got really excited about the changes that we're making, that we're currently highlighting right now, but formalizing for next year. Uh, with the support of the grant we received from TBA. Uh, we also had a, a really great turnout at a parent meeting yesterday. It's been a couple of hours with the cafeteria filled with parents, talking about what that honor looks like. Very excited about the possibilities, the changes and shifts, uh, that we continue to move Legacy in the direction that it's moving and accelerate that excellence again. Uh, within two years' place, he's gonna be a model of a school in the state of Texas. Uh, and it's gonna be an AMV school, uh, within two years. And so, uh, with the grant being a catalyst, we're really excited about those moves. And the parents were just overjoyed by the possibilities for their kids to include outside of school and enrichment opportunities and even community education opportunities for, for parents to, to better support their families and most importantly, support their kids. So, uh, great to talk with you and continue in the conversation, uh, with the parents and the community. Uh, we're currently stacking up for next year, um, and beginning that student plan. So, lots of good work to you and keep you impressed.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Tony.
I have just one comment. The, what's, joke that we was limited at the hotspot, so may I? For the seventh grade of last year, thirteen percent needs, um, and two percent masters. But twenty-twenty-five, thirty, uh, eight, uh, twenty-eight percent needs and twelve percent masters. That's like more than double. What, what amazing happen to you?
I think Jonathan indicating all of the targeting and intentionality, uh, and constant adjusting. Uh, not just launching the plan and hoping it works, but rather ordering the impact data and making adjustments in real time. Uh, and an all-hand-on-deck approach to moving people and kids around. And Jonathan kind of, kind of downplayed it a little bit, like, it's because none of us are really satisfied. Uh, and we really know that, that our teachers are working really hard and our kids are working really hard. They're capable of so much more and we have high expectations and anticipation of, you know, where they're going this year before we're going in the return. So, um, thanks for pointing that out.
Absolutely.
We've got a long, long to go.
Jumped off the page, but, uh, that's great.
Good job. Good work. Awesome. The next item is eight point two for scale report, Sisana?
Yeah, trustees, just, this lunch report's in your electronic package, so know, uh, if you'd like more information. There's very little activity, which is typical, uh, for this time of year.
And then I have an eight point three on construction update.
Yeah, so, Mr. Thomas is gonna provide the board with, uh, the most recent update on the twenty-twenty-two construction, uh, construction project program. Uh, you have a hard copy as well in your packet.
Good evening. Can I go ahead and start off with Oak Crest? Uh, we're on the final rank of the, the addition itself, to doing time source in there, uh, testing balance and the H back system. So, we're, we're the tail end of the book. Uh, in addition to that, we're currently going to fence across the back. We did some asphalt work up in the front over the spring break, uh, holiday, to make some repairs to the, uh, parking lot. We're hoping here in the next month, we're gonna do the sewer pipeline, the saw sewer line that's in the front, so that we can close the wastewater treatment plant at these two schools. So, if, if that is completed, I believe here in the next month, month and a half, we'll be completing. Valor Mill School, you can see here, we're, we've got the, the last frame out in that north, uh, wing of the school. Uh, going right now, they're finishing up some of the steel. That middle wing that holds administration, that comes across the front there, we've got, we've got the deck on, the roof itself. And, uh, the second story slabs have been linked in there as well. And they're, they're building walls. Uh, that last, uh, thing that takes it all the way to the back there to the cafeteria. The cafeteria actually has glass now. They're dried in and we're continuing to move forward on that. The site itself, uh, we've got good progress with all the utility work that's going on there. The wastewater treatment plant, uh, is moving forward as well. We've got the line all the way down to the creek. And, uh, the site, we're, we're making good progress and we're right in line with that spring, that spring, uh, show network. So, we'll have quite a bit of time to do this. Victory Elementary School, we did an aerial flyover that, that is there for y'all if you'd like to look at it. It's got an initial drone video flight. All the piers are now set. We have the first two run slabs in and they're working on the structural floor itself. That, that porch should be here in the next week or two. Uh, really good progress over there. The site is coming together very well. It's actually ahead of schedule. Utilities, site utilities, a lot of them have been repaired now. We'll see some of the, the work going on there, but really, really pushing hard with that team over there, making good progress. Uh, the CT building, we've now got the utilities in the ground, the site hat itself is laid out. We're gonna start working on those floors here. The actual footing floors here is next week. We've got them all ready to go. And then you'll see a slab going, making good progress on that one. Uh, in addition to that, we are continuing to work on High School Number Two's plan, uh, making good progress on that one. As well as Elementary School Number Ten, that site was the finish of that purchase for that site. Uh, there are thirteen forty-six and Stuart Road have been completed this last week. And we're making, uh, headway on kind of making the plan itself a little more efficient. Same, same footprint as Honor and then Victory. We're just, we're just kind of making it a little more economical, uh, and make it a little smarter plan and design. Working with the, uh, staff. Y'all have any questions?
Hey, um, a little question. Uh, well, um, on the, uh, CT building, how, how big is the, uh, the footprint, I guess, in the slab, how big?
So, if you can see there, that's actually the building footprint itself. I can get you the actual dimensions and forward that to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I do. Uh, just, just curious, uh, do you have to kind of round it out?
I can bring you the layout off the top of my head. I've got something over there.
I have, uh,
Yeah, I can get you the actual hand footprint of all this.
He's, he's curious. So, that's the shop, Mr. Hallford's shop, to the right, just for, just size in context. So, the size of that shop is the old John and Jim right. And then you can see that's the tire slab, which is probably four times the size of that footprint, just for proportionality. But we definitely speak to you.
I'm not a lot of, not a big deal. And so, this, this is really, this one here is more of a future journey. Um, over at, Over at Oakcrest, I had the, we had the walkthrough, if you will, and it's similar to the one at Highland Forest. The one that just stood out, it was the observation of the connecting wall, if you will, the, the window there. And then it's like a glass door, I believe, sliding door, I believe.
It's not a slider, but it's actually a double door.
Yeah, so, so the concern, and I think that if we could get, and I don't know if you guys have already, but do, could do a type of, or a study on getting cheap involved, something that if somebody was able to get into one classroom, they could bust their way through or, or just be able to get to other classrooms. That was something that was a concern. I don't know if y'all have ever done that study or not, but I think it's something that we ought to look into. And then if you did or you haven't, what are we going to do to make sure that that's not a way for them to get to another factory?
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, once you get into the first classroom, it has connectivity in the back through some storefronts, it would probably last.
Yes, sir. And it looks like that whole wing is, is, will be able to make entry to the others, right?
So it's very similar to the other elementary schools we have out there. And we took, we impressed that door through the locking mechanism with that door. Now we can do that to cheap, like we can sit down and talk to people more in depth. With that, the, the storefront doors that we use, how do we have automatic lock? Well, if that thing is shut, you have that open. So that's nice.
Are you talking about the connectivity of the classrooms from the inside?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's actually our early childhood classroom model. So all of our early childhood classrooms are connected, so that the teachers can work together and supervise students in the classroom. And that's actually all of the big classrooms, basically, right? Yeah.
No, no, I, I understand, and I think it's great. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it.
You're saying that you're going to secure from the hot side.
Exactly. And I know we have a, a lockdown, and we locked down little, but if they were able to get into one room, it would be a lot easier just to go through that classroom. And maybe I'm making a bigger deal. That was just an observation that I had. I was like, man, what, what do they have or what do they, what are the procedures set in place? Like, that is an impressive, right?
Absolutely.
And I understand the reason why. I think it's great. But I think that just to get so-
I think that's something we'll bring to the safety committee, to kind of review that together with chief and the law enforcement, first responders and kind of-
Yeah, just to get their tag.
Yeah, just kind of see tag.
Mine, I don't know if there are-
Is there, is there a- Yeah, is there a construction solution or is there a procedural addition or addition to the emergency response protocol? I guess to adequately improve the condition, right?
I would say that, I would say that it's-
Okay. Mr. McKay, I was like, sure we add that to the safety committee?
And one thing we had discussed hardware to do that, is the locking, the door lock up either side.
Door and door would have to actually manipulate.
Right. You can lock it. It's a, it's a hardware, but it's a preference of how your hardware is functioning when you lock it. And I absolutely talked about the key.
Well, I would say too, because it's lax.
Right.
There could also be a lazy, you know, considered for that as well. So if this is a lazy, yeah, it causes a delay in the ability to penetrate, like on our exterior, a lazy, um, other. Because of the deep safety standards.
Improve your ownership. Improve all, we actually use a lot of class. They're just being-
I definitely, I mean, and I'll give you one, I think it's great. I think the utilization to be able to connect is just wonderful.
That's not beautiful.
How does especially work with you, if you bring that forward?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is eight point four, district-wide intruder detection audit report party.
Yeah, so I'll turn it over to Mr. McKay. I, I know that you're very familiar with the intruder, intruder event protection audit program that TA launched post-Valley. It's something that we've been very proud that the state undertook because it ensured a liability that can tighten it up on all of our protocols for monitoring safety and security. That the adult behaviors were following the expectations and that all of our physical structures were safe and secure and operating appropriately. So the intruder audit was random. All of our schools have been tested and multiple timing specifications were aligned on that. But essentially, there's three phases to an audit. And the first phase is they try and get intruders to the facility. And so in this particular case, they're not able to do so. The second phase is to review the logs to ensure that we are monitoring and testing and checking all of our exterior doors on a daily basis. Pass that phase as well. And the third phase is to walk the principal and physically inspect all of the exterior doors to make sure they're secure and that they're operating appropriately. In this particular case, one particular goal, which Mr. McKay will talk about in carriage, that was not functional. After it was inspected, that went pretty good.
Yes, sir. So as, as you stated earlier that morning, coincidentally, the campus police officer and officer agree to actually check that very door that's talking about and if it was functioning properly. What we discovered, happened in after action review, was the coaches had gone out to athletics and we went to go unlock the door. They left the athletes back in the gym, thinking that it had locked and closed behind him. They went on about their day. Subsequently, about ninety minutes later, they did an intruder protection audit and the door was not secured properly. When they went to go inspect it wide, it had locked it, it was good. There was a mechanism that broke on the inside of it. The lock system took apart and we was able to pull out a big piece of metal that broke off inside of it, which caused the locking mechanism to break apart. So it was inspected earlier that day. It had been operating. We checked all the weekly exterior door safety logs. It had been showing that it had been operating. It was a fluke. So what we've already done to this point is the door has already, it was corrected that day. We put a new locking mechanism in. We actually ordered a different one, which allows you, does not allow you to unlock it at all. You only can use a key in order to be able to open the door. So you will never have an opportunity for it to ever become unlocked again in the future. As I mentioned, we had done an after-action review with the administrative team, created some plans. So we need to ensure that we continue to monitor these doors. We trained all of the staff, included the subs, on the, their responsibility to ensure that every door is secure, but as well as whether they're reporting protocols and procedures in the event that a door is not secured properly, so that they know who they need to report that to immediately and have that urgency and that safety is everybody's responsibility. The other thing that we did is we re-racked with the coaching staff on, they have a series of exterior doors that all lead into the gym or into locker rooms and setting up a process where they're going to be doing it throughout the day because they're in and out so much for athletics. They're going to continue to check those doors at a timely basis and making sure that that's the case. And then we also just, we just had an AP meeting the very next week. And we retrained all of the assistant principals across the district and made sure that we took some time to review their weekly exterior door safety suites. We reviewed their protocols and procedures for those. So to date, we have had thirty-two campuses that have had no findings at all and have been inspected for the last three years. Unfortunately, we have had the four, and of those four, each one of those has been because of the faulty mechanism in the door that has unlocked. Other than the high school, and that's just because of the challenge of the past period. Two of those is doors that have signs on the back of the south campus, which is to be able to enter the building during class. But I'd be happy to answer your questions. We have presented this report to the school safety committee. As Mr. Chris Gunn mentioned, we do have police officers. We have a couple board members that are a part of that, as well as we have fire and rescue, air town, emergency management. We have parents and they approve the action plans placed. And as part of the requirement by CEA, you have to report this to the board as well. We choose, as most districts, state building executive session, we choose to do it in public. So we just want everybody to know. So we're going on. I'd be happy to answer your questions, ma'am.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. The next item is eight point five upcoming in, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to point out. March and April. March, we're, we're close to the end, but I did want to point out that the academic achievement awards at the high school are at the Performance Arts Center at six P M on the twenty-sixth of March. Normally, all trustees are able to make that in advance for the year. And just by way of reminder, that's where all of the high school students receive their certificates for academic achievement to include every teacher identified or selected wants to receive the award of the year. And then graduation, because of time constraints, we don't do those things. This is where the kids are getting their certificates. It's a really big night for our kids and families. In April, very busy, lots of activities. But a couple of things on point two now, as we're getting into April, we're starting into banquet season. And so JRO T C award ceremony is on the ninth. High School Period Six, our one act play is going to perform for the community, sixth grade pack on the sixteenth. Your next writer who's scheduled board meeting is on the seventeenth. On the eighteenth is a Good Friday students' that holiday. Keep in mind, we had a bad weather makeup day. That was the next first available day, but we opted for the Monday. So we wanted to make sure that all our families and staff still had Good Friday off, but they will come to school on Mondays.
On the afternoon.
Yes, Monday after Tuesday for the makeup day. On the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, either day, they repeat the show twice. That's the spring show for Dan's cheer, those programs. And then on the twenty-eighth, Military Enlistment Night, where we recognize all of our students who have enlisted to serve in one of the armed forces. And that's at the pack at six P M. And then the High School's National Honor Society induction. The next night on the fourth of March, also the pack at six P M. Again, April and May, very active with banquets and inductions and recognitions and stuff. So I just wanted to call your attention first. There's also a couple of other things that I just wanted to make sure you guys got. I wanted to give you a sampling of a couple of things that we've done in, in effort to both continue to build community and partnerships across the district, but also share information about the upcoming bond election. So the first is we worked together with Mr. Crossco as part of his leadership pathing program to generate a, really an Ecentriest, the quick look, some highlights, some things that people are proud of, some things that we want to make sure people understand about their children attending schools and Ecentriest schools. We're dropping these off at all the new developments, so that the model homes is a entertaining perspective. Home buyers, they know a little something about our school district. You also will see a breakfast superintendent, which Mr. Crossco is also very engaged in. We are attempting to bring together all of the clergy. I believe we have twenty, we've identified twenty-seven different churches in our community. And we want to bring those, those leaders together to have a conversation about how we can work together to support our fast-growing community. We share many of the same challenges and we think that we're better together. So we're really excited about that. We're getting a lot of R S V Ps already. And Mr. Crossco was throwing church, church to make sure he gets personal contact and offers personal invitation. And then the Highland Forest community, there are several HOAs in that area. And when we attempted to engage them, they don't eat as frequently as some of our other homeowners associations. And so when we do finally connect with them, oftentimes they're well-attended. So we thought that like the Lakeside area, if we bring them all together, one, we have a better opportunity to have a bigger audience and be more accessible. So we're going to have a town hall meeting and a little of the individual homeowners meetings in an attempt to have a, hopefully a cafeteria full of Highland Forest, where we can talk about the growth of the community, information about the upcoming bond election, just have a community conversation there. So I just wanted to see, wanted you to have line of sight to those different pieces of engagement with the community. We have another community that we are going to be one or more of those as well. But I just wanted you to see that, if you're aware.
Thank you. I love that. All right, thank you so much. The next, as action begin to nine point one, consider and take possible action to improve a healthcare benefits consultant, including possible delegation of authority to the superintendent.
Yeah, trustees, collectively, we have been all about making sure that our employees have quality healthcare. And we weren't just a very reactive, traditional sick care model. We wanted our employees to be well, and we wanted to be proactive, and we wanted our healthcare benefits program to be very accessible to all of our employees and to ensure that we're taking care of ourselves before we say. And we've made great strides the last five years. Our employee surveys that went from employee benefits being at the bottom, of satisfaction surveys to the very top. And we're very pleased with that. So we don't want to take any steps backwards. We want to continue to refine and move forward the benefits and the nature of our health benefits program for our employees as we learn more about what's possible in the interest of proactive ones. But that being said, we've also learned about the industry and how when you work together with consultants, there's a lot of different models in the way that you design your plan. And our particular plan design has some opportunity to really become more efficient, to eliminate a lot of the middlemen, if you will, in different aspects of our plan, to be, to be way more efficient on that and not sacrifice the quality that our employees enjoy. And so we, as you know, have been working together as a team for several months to vet other prospects as a partner. And so I'd like Ms. Burns to talk a little bit about that and where we are today before I bring this item to your consideration. So.
Yes, thank you. Right, so what we would be looking at here is seeking a different consultant who would put a plan design together for us. And they would be looking at the key components of what you need to have to set your healthcare plan. They would study our current contracts, our current history. They can reprice that in the market. They would be going out for formal RFPs on Gap East Central to prepare those different pieces of our plan. So for example, our network, we're currently witnessing the network. They would, they would look at that, they reprice it with other vendors, they can put that out for a formal RFP. And that can have a large impact on your overall spend. One, just your contracted prices with the providers that are within those networks. So obviously, if you have better discounts with those network providers, then that saves both the plan and the members money. Then also the, the size of the network also can have the impacts, because the more providers that are in network, then it reduces the amount of out of network costs that a member could incur or the plan can incur. So outside of the network, there is not a contracted price. So really, that's where a lot of high cost is going to play. They would also do RFPs for our pharmacy benefit manager. And so they could also take a look at our specific data and see what formularies were best for our population. They would also take that out to the market and get competitive pricing on the drug costs themselves, as well as reduced fees and perhaps getting more of a rebate funds back to the plan. And then they would also cure our stock loss, so based on some of the, our claims experience, what network we would be using, what benefit pharmacy benefit manager we'd be using. That would all have an impact on what we would get for a stock loss proposal. And so basically, our stocks, since we're self-funded, our stock loss insurance, it's basically like reinsurance. And we have a specific stock loss. If you have an individual high-cost payment, at a certain point, the stock loss coverage kicks in. And then in total, for all of your claims, there's an aggregate stock loss. So they would be able to go to the market and get a good fair stock loss cured for us. And then they're very well versed in making contracts, so making sure that we wouldn't have hidden fees and that everything in the language of the contract is, is best for the districts and in our, and our members. So overall, they would take a good approach for going out to the market and making sure that the pieces of our plan that we have in place help us get the best value for the districts and our employees.
Yes, so trustees, I recommend more approval of Holmes Murphy Associates LLC to provide healthcare consultant services to the district and authorize superintendent to negotiate contract with Holmes Murphy and Associates LLC in a form approved by council for the district for fair and reasonable cost. council for the district for fair and reasonable reason.
So we have a recommendation from the superintendent throughout the motion.
Help us in either of the departments, Murphy and Associates, and authorize the president to motion the rest.
So we have a motion from Mr. Sprezenhan. Do we have a second? Do we have a second from Mr. Crossco? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a... The nine point two donation from Dairy Max.
Yeah, trustees, per policy, donation of five thousand dollars is accepted through the trustees. What we're bringing forward to your consideration tonight is an eight-thousand-dollar donation from Dairy Max. Dairy Max, if you're not aware, is part of Dairy Council, represents one of the seven hundred dairy farm families across eight states. Their mission is to advocate for the dairy experience in communities and child nutrition programs. So this donation is being given, offered to our child nutrition program. And our child nutrition program plans to use those funds to purchase supplies and equipment for three of our school cafeterias, the high school, Cass Lee, and Lakeside Middle School. So if you have any questions, I'd ask you.
Anyone have any questions?
How are the schools? So, is Mary here tonight?
No, no, I'm here.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Can you talk a little bit more about why those particular campuses were selected?
So based on what the grant specifications were, the type of equipment we could purchase, we basically went through all of our campuses, literally walked every one of them, and tried to determine which ones had the oldest equipment or had issues with those type, that type of equipment. And then that's how we chose which ones we were going to put it towards.
Uh, credit to trustees, I recommend board approval to accept the eight thousand dollar donation from Dairy Max.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. We have a motion from Coach Olney. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Sprezenhan. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is section ten. Is there any board trustee that would like to have anything to consent to at this time? So then that leads us to item eleven, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Crossco. Do I have a second? Have a second from the board. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm ready to get out of here. Okay. So do I have an emotion to accept the consent admitted as presented? Motion from Mr. Sprezenhan. Do I have a second? And a second from Coach Olney. Always in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Motion carries. Last item is adjournment. Let's see. Have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Sprezenhan and a second to adjourn from Coach Olney. All is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?